Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constand.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winsell.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Thank you. I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. On the -- this is a special meeting. We have public hearing on agenda items at this time.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion to approve the agenda for -- and even though you --
Oh, okay. You know what? We do have an agenda. Okay. I would like -- okay. Next on the agenda is agenda approval.
All right, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the agenda for July 24, 2019, regular business meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items only.
What's on the motion?
The resolution.
All we have is just this resolution and ordinance. No one? Okay. Sure? All right. Next, we have ordinance and resolution. This is Council Chairwoman Malinowski Maxwell and Council Pro Tem Bazey, resolution to authorize the retention of Ottenwest, Tawil, Schenk, PLC as special legal counsel of council to the corporation counsel, and to authorize the firm to file actions necessary and retainer agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I move the council to authorize the retention of Ottenwest, Tawil, and Schenk, PLC as special legal counsel of council to the corporation counsel, and to authorize the firm to file necessary actions as outlined in 11A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Winsell. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
One of the questions that I had in resolution, and I'd just like to bring it up again, is in there, we had on there, I'll tell you specifically, at the end of it, it says resolved that the Dearborn Heights City Council reaffirms the all prior, that's a key word, prior, actions taken by the firm, Ottenwest, Tawil, and Schenk, PLC are authorized actions on behalf of the city council, and shall be compensated, another key word, upon ratification of the attached retainer agreement. I have a problem with them being paid for the first lawsuit that was submitted, because that was not authorized by the council or voted on by the council as a whole.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constand.
I agree with Councilman Abdallah, and then also, what's always important is that the council get a detailed monthly billing, and that we all see the billing, and that we have to approve payment of the billing. It's some discussion of whether or not that has to be done in closed session, but that has to be in here, that all the -- everybody will see the billing, and that we have to approve the monthly billing.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Sorry, I forgot to finish the rest of it. In addition to that, I feel that our corporation counsel, this particular firm, Ottenwest, Tawil, and Schenk, is being hired as special counsel to our corporation counsel. I suggested, and would like to have it included, where our corporation counsel would look over not only the resolution, but also the retainer agreement, just to make sure that we are okay as far as legalese is concerned. So I'd like to make any type of approval, I'd like to motion any type of approval subject to final corporation approval and revisions.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I will add to that. That sounds fair. Normally, corporate attorney Miyaki reviews it, but I think because of that 21 days, there needs to be a timeline created to have that expectation fulfilled.
That's fair.
Okay. Because well, we had -- my thought was too, though, he will review this. We know the mayor is probably going to veto it, and it will come with some kind of opinion letter from corporate counsel Miyaki, and in there, we would get his opinion in regards to this, of what he thinks about it. And so, not to delay any more time.
Because you have that 21-day window to work with.
Yes. It'll come by the next meeting whether we ask --
We do have a 21-day window to work with, but at the same time, we want to make sure as far as legalese, we're not putting anybody in a bad situation, specifically our taxpayers' money.
Yeah, Madam Chair, let's be clear, that this is all going to be paid for --
Counselments be recognized.
With taxpayer money.
Right. Any further discussion? Okay, at this point, we have the resolution in front of us as it sets right now.
Madam Chair, I'm not clear on whether or not I'm supposed to be reviewing or not reviewing, given what -- I mean, it sounds like there was a general sense of things in terms of the council, but there's been no change in the motion.
Okay. Because I understand that the mayor is going to already veto this, so he's probably going to have you write an opinion paper on what you think of this. I'm sure that's what will follow, so we'll just wait for that, I guess. Councilman Abdallah.
But that would be taking a risk. Let's -- I don't know if he is or is not vetoing it. I'm not inside his head. But let's pretend hypothetically, he does not veto this.
Okay.
Then we're going to be moving forward with this.
Let's do this, then. If the mayor doesn't veto it by the next meeting, can you still provide us with an opinion on this by the next meeting?
I'll do whatever you want me to, as far as --
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Matthew Schenk, from Ottenwest, Tawil, and Schenk. Just a couple points of clarification. The first is, there's 21 days to appeal, but that clock started on the 17th. So where we said today, there's 14 days left in that appeal. It was my understanding that the retainer agreement was on the agenda for last night, so it would have been submitted prior to this, and so it's possible that there might already be review that's taken place before it was on last night's agenda. So maybe that would be an easier way to see if there's any concerns with it in its current form.
Was there any concerns?
There is at least one concern with respect to the time period for the retention.
Oh, it's been changed.
I don't have a copy of the latest agreement.
Can we get him?
I have a copy of a new resolution. There might be a way to basically deal with this in terms of the practicalities. Perhaps you could split your motion, one motion to approve the resolution retainer agreement, or one motion to direct the filing of appeal to preserve the city council's appeal rights, with the idea that the mayor might veto both of them, and I don't know how you deal with that, but it's still the same issue. But then, we don't end up having this issue with regard to having anything caught up in terms of my review with regard to that particular issue.
Well, quite honestly, go ahead.
Just on that point, the final resolve clause in the resolution says that each action authorized by this resolution shall be interpreted to be separately and independently authorized by the council in the event that any action is subsequently determined to be invalid. I wonder if Mr. Miyaki could see a way in which the mayor could issue a partial veto of one item, and the council could decide from there whether or not to proceed with the remaining resolve clauses, as opposed to it being split into four or five different resolutions?
Actually, he doesn't -- he has the ability to veto an action of the body as a whole. He doesn't have, you know, a right to, like, a line item veto in this situation. That's why I'm suggesting that this might be a better way to end up doing things. He may veto it anyways, you may still, and you'd have to rely on Mr. Schenk and his firm with regard to discussion specifically regarding that action. I've basically made sure that I'm not involved in that lawsuit, other than to be available to discuss things or to provide information if I'm directed or requested to do so. But my recommendation would be probably to do it as two motions, they're both being adopted at the same time here, and that might actually alleviate some of the issues. Because you do have a timeframe, it is 21 days from the 17th, and then if the mayor vetoes one or both, then you're not going to end up having a problem based on my review or me giving you the review, because I might review, say that there's a problem, and then you have to end up potentially coming back and altering things with regard to the resolution.
Well, if we have to, that would be fine with me. I mean, just to --
But that goes beyond your timeframe in terms of the 21 days. So what I'm trying to do is make sure that you're not going to miss your 21 days inadvertently, and I'm not taking a position with regard to your appeal or whether or not you should do so.
I got a question for Mr. Schenk. If we approve this tonight, and we find there may be a problem, we can tweak it to correct the problem, but still reserve the right of moving forward with just this right now?
Well, if I understood the suggestion from Mr. Miyaki, it's essentially to maintain all of the same whereas clauses, and to break the four, the five resolved, would actually be four resolved clauses into separate resolutions. And so I do have copies of the resolution we could strike through, so that the council could adopt four separate resolutions this evening, related to the first being to approve the retainer agreement of July 18th. The second would be related to the reaffirming the prior actions. The third would be to file a mandamus related to the new retainer agreement, and the fourth being to file the appeal.
If I may, Council Chair, it'd actually be, my recommendation would be easier than that. You could end up approving this resolution, and then approving a separate motion that essentially is worded the same as the second from last paragraph in the resolution, the one which says that your firm is directed to file an appeal, preserve things. It would be redundant, but on the other hand, it would end up dealing with the issue that we have here in terms of my review, as well as the idea of preserving the appeal. Again, it'd be redundant, but, you know, the redundancy doesn't, it strike me as hurting anyone under these circumstances.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
What about the possibility of giving you maybe 24, 48, 72 hours to look this --
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean it like that. I wasn't trying to be --
My God, none of the meetings this week, no.
Yeah, apologize. So what if we were to give you just a hypothetical day, two, three, whatever, and then we have another special meeting, which in this case, if there's no changes, we could approve it subject to no revisions by the corporation counsel. But if there is revisions by the corporation counsel, we have another special meeting, which would be in and out in five minutes, 10 minutes, whatever it happens to be.
Us? Five minutes?
Whatever it happens to be. Well, no, no, no. I mean, because under the circumstances --
Isn't that marijuana place?
Because under, lacked sleep from last night, but, yeah, under the circumstances, you know, look, none of us want to meet 50 times, but under the circumstances, in respecting the law, that there's only 21 days for us to be able to appeal this, even if we met Friday hypothetically, not tomorrow, obviously, it's too early.
Yeah, at this point, I think we just move forward with this, and if there's something wrong, I know council will veto it. I mean, the mayor will veto it, and you will write it off, and that's our review. I mean --
The mayor may very well veto it for a lot of the reasons that he's ended up vetoing things before, which are not legal basis, they're based on his sense of whether or not it's appropriate policy. So he may end up doing --
And I'm sure if there's something that is not right, you will include that in that veto. Is that correct?
I, well, if the mayor directs me to do so, then I will end up preparing the veto, and I will include, if that's what you want me to do, and if, but ultimately, his veto is his veto. He might say, I don't like these reasons that Gary has included in this draft, but, you know, my tendency is to believe that he wouldn't normally do so. But I could also do something separately that basically says, these are the problems that I see with this. I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Because I think we need to move forward on this. We've come two days in a row.
Well, what if he doesn't veto it, though? I mean, I'm just telling you.
Guarantee it, he is going to.
But what if he didn't?
Well, you know what? We're not going to talk.
Madam Chair, could I make one additional suggestion that might
Yes.
Assist with this? And that is, if the council this evening were to add an item to your agenda, to modify your regular meeting schedule to include one additional regular meeting, so that the veto would have to be presented to council prior to the 21-day period, you can amend your regular meeting schedule, so that it would be a regular meeting that happens prior to the 21-day deadline, and then any of these items that come up could then be addressed through an override vote at that point.
Let me ask our Mr. Clerk for that. That is that?
We would have to put a legal notice, I believe, in the paper, first of all.
Yeah.
I think we are required on that, too.
Problem is, is I've got a lot of medical issues coming up, and I will be tied up, and I don't know what dates they will fall on for a special meeting. And these are meetings that everyone needs to be here.
Well, we're all here tonight. I say we just vote on this and move forward.
I agree.
And if there is something wrong, we'll come back, and we'll correct it if council finds something major wrong that's going to cause us a problem. I have no problem coming back and correcting, you know, a section or two of this, just so we can move forward at this point. We're all seven here. This is our second night here. We were here until 11 o'clock last night, and, you know, people have, it's summertime, you know.
Madam Chair, can I point, Madam Chair, is that you don't have a regular meeting between now and the deadline? So if there was a veto over the appeal without amending your regular meeting schedule, because the charter says that you can override a veto at a regular meeting of the city council, and so you would need to amend your regular meeting schedule in order to ensure that you could override a veto within the 21-day timeframe that's established by the courts. The challenge with a 21-day, when you meet every two weeks in a regular meeting, is that you don't, within that timeframe, ever have an ability to introduce an action and then override a veto within that same timeframe.
Okay. Well, so we'll just vote on this now, and then have another regular meeting next Tuesday? Is that what we're saying?
I believe that you would have to amend your regular meeting schedule, so that it would be a regular meeting, as opposed to calling it a special meeting, in order to comply with the charter provision.
So you're saying switch dates, I presume? Is that correct?
That's fine.
This coming Tuesday and next Tuesday?
The clerk and I are both kind of looking at each other, because we're not sure of the ability to pull that off.
I don't know when I can, first of all, I don't know when I could get the ad in the paper. They have their deadlines. Secondly, I just want to advise, Madam Chair, that we have an election coming up, and I got a kind of a full dance card going on. I have classes next week, even in the evening, training poll workers, so.
Council Chair, did we not years ago change that, that it didn't have to be in the papers, it just has to be online? I believe we did that as a council body.
It was just at the polls.
It was, it does not have to be in a local paper, it just has to be a notice, and it could be online.
That's correct.
There are certain caveats to that action, and the council and I are looking at each other.
Yeah, well, I'm not normally involved, I mean, this is unanticipated.
But you were here when we did, the council did that.
Oh, no, I know, I drafted it.
Yes.
It was a charter amendment.
Well, it's actually, it was in the charter. So, but the issue is not if we can do it with anything in terms of a notice, when state law doesn't otherwise require us to end up doing it. So for example, for certain zoning things, you still have to end up going about things in terms of a traditional notification. You can't end up relying on just posting it on the city website. I don't know if that's the same thing with regard to the calendar.
But why can't we have a special meeting, the next scheduled meeting could --
Well, because a veto cannot be entertained at a special meeting, it's only a next regular meeting according to the charter.
Right, so your timeframe to end up, what Mr. Schenk has explained is that your timeframe with regard to taking the appeal is going to expire before the next regular meeting. So if the mayor vetoes, then there's a concern with regard to being able to override the veto within the timeframe to end up filing a claim of appeal. Is that correct, Mr. Schenk?
Correct.
Okay, at this point.
And section 6.4 of the charter says, "The council shall meet not less than twice each month in the council chambers, at times and dates to be determined by the council at the first meeting thereof after the regular city election in April. If any time set for the holding falls on a holiday, then it moves to the next secular day, which is not a holiday." So by saying not less than twice each month, the council could add an additional regular meeting for the month of August, say, so that you could meet once prior to the deadline.
Okay. Well, at this point, everybody's giving me the ayes. I think they want to vote on this at this time. Am I correct?
We got it, we can, but we have to, we have to do something like they both said about today.
Right, but we still need to vote this first, because there's nothing to veto unless we pass this.
That's true.
So let's take our vote on this unless, you know, I think it's time we vote on it.
But, Madam Chair.
Councilman?
When are the changes going to be made that were discussed to the retainer agreement?
Does that change your vote if we do change?
I, I --
You said no, right?
You're answering my question with a question.
I am. You're right.
I didn't, are you talking about the resolution or the agreement itself?
The retainer agreement.
There was no change.
I believe Councilman Constand was requesting
No, there were two.
All the invoices to be presented to the council.
Yeah, well, that goes without saying, right? Everything, I mean, anything over $1,400, we do, we get all the attorney fees, right?
Well.
Yeah. You give us everything, why not?
We give you an invoice every time.
Yeah, so I don't see a problem with that.
And Councilman Abdallah's concern about the first lawsuit that was filed, though there was never authorization.
This body did approve to hire them and pay them from the beginning, so we really can't pull that out now after the fact, because we already authorized it.
No, no, making the changes to that Councilman Abdallah, because to the retainer.
I understand, but we have realized that we did, as a body, approve this.
There's a motion on the floor to vote on it after.
What you're saying is those changes won't be made.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to vote on this. This is the resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to authorize the retention of Ottenwest, Tawil, Schenk, PLC as special legal counsel of council to the corporation counsel, and to authorize the firm to file necessary actions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's poll. Councilwoman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Constand?
No.
Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah?
No.
Councilman Winsell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell? Yes. Motion is passed.
Now, we get to the point of setting up another date.
Well, I believe there was a second suggestion, that there'd be a second resolution that only addresses the appeal. So the same resolution with --
So you need a second motion?
Well, they're both passed together already.
This whole thing was passed.
This whole thing was just passed.
But that's one action. So I think the point that Mr. Miyaki was making was, if you also voted on a resolution that only related to the appeal, and that resolution was not vetoed, then there wouldn't be an issue with the 21-day clock.
Right.
You could cancel that other --
Go ahead.
I make a motion that the law firm of Ottenwest, Tawil, and Schenk, PLC, is directed to file an appeal of the court's July 17 through 19 decision in a matter of Dearborn Heights City Council versus Daniel S. Pelletko, case number 19-007240-AW, to preserve the city council's authority in the event the mayor again refuses to sign the revised retainer agreement, and be it --
No, no, stop.
No, that's it.
And it's it, as outlined in 11A.
You could call it 11B.
Or 11B, excuse me.
11B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Councilman Constand and Councilman Abdallah are no.
Now we can move forward on making a date.
Okay, when do we want to meet?
Good Tuesday.
Well, Mr. Clerk, what day do you have available next week that's not so busy that --
I'm looking at my calendar.
That's a good question.
Week after the election.
You want to put yourself in hand?
Monday is definitely unattainable for --
What about Tuesday, the 30th?
Tuesday, the 30th.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Barring any catastrophes, which we seem to have every other day, yeah. I mean, I'm just telling you.
We can add the date, and we can remove the date later for future meetings, correct?
If, you know, we've never missed --
Or if we go into --
We'll make sure that either, Monday is unattainable, we have a meeting, and we have the room reserved here, so it's from 7 to 9:30-ish. Any other day than that, we will make sure that either myself or my deputy is available.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't put it into August, like, August 1st, what day is that? Because that would make two that month, and then we wouldn't have to have three, or no, let's just put it, put that on Tuesday.
Chair, I think Tuesday is six.
Tuesday's good.
The miss is your, yeah.
What time?
The 27th.
I won't be at August 1st anyway.
The 27th.
Can we do 7 o'clock, or what time?
Wait.
Tuesday, the 27th, at what time?
No, the 30th.
Tuesday, the 30th?
Yeah.
Wait, wait a minute, Thursday, the, oh.
Tuesday, July 30th.
Yeah, excuse me, I'm, yeah, you're correct.
We just need a time.
It was 30th.
7:00 PM, 6:00 PM, what time?
Can we do it 6:00 PM?
I can do 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
It's going to be a quick, short one, so, I know it will be.
Not with us.
Well, it's going to be, there's going to be a veto on agenda, most likely, so.
Okay.
Now, Madam Chair, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
I want to clarify that you are calling this a regular meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Without having any law in front of me, or the Open Meetings Act, I just caution you that we may be required to post it in the paper.
But I believe our corporation counsel drafted that.
But I don't, I don't know what the state law requires with regard to this.
But you drafted that.
But it's if state law doesn't override that. If there's a state law requirement, that's what the city court is requiring.
Well, shouldn't we have known that already and stricken it from the books?
No, because we can't override state law.
No, because I don't understand that, because that was a charter amendment that went before the voters, which means the language had to be approved by the state before it could go on ballot.
Right, but the language takes into account the fact that if there is some notice provision that supersedes local ordinance, the local charter, that we can't override what state law requires. That's why it was drafted the way it was. So what the clerk is indicating is that we don't necessarily know right off the top of our heads what's going to be required, because we normally don't go through this process.
I don't understand why we spent the money writing the ordinance then.
I've got a question, Mr. Clerk. Is there any specific paper we have to put in, or just a paper?
Just a paper.
We have somebody from the press out here?
No, Times Herald.
Times Herald, that's the newspaper.
Usually we do Sunday and Wednesday, and we do Friday, so I'm not sure.
When's your deadline for Wednesday?
It did, Sunday would work.
Well, Sunday would --
Sunday would work, it's 18 hours, isn't it?
I just would like to answer Councilman Muscat's concerns here. I was a driving force behind that. It was a charter amendment. And we did that to save money, because we were publishing minutes to the tune of several hundred dollars, and we wrote it, and the council wrote it in such a way as anything as required by the charter can be put on the internet, the paper, or both. But it was only things required by the charter. This is a different instance. This is not, this open meetings and the need to post is not a charter issue. It's a legal issue. And I want, just want to explain to you that we are required by law to post certain legal postings for the election, and we cannot use our charter amendment to say we're putting it online, we're saving the money. So that's why I'm just cautioning you that this.
I can't guarantee, I will never guarantee you something I can't guarantee.
But let me ask you this, how long would it take us to post it in a newspaper? I mean, what is, I don't know what the, what the.
Deadlines.
I'm unaware of their deadlines off the top of my head.
Okay, she's texting her editor to find out what the deadline is for Sunday.
Pressing guide believes it's Wednesday.
I'm just pulling up the Open Meetings Act, and I think we might have an answer. It's 15.265, Public Notice of Regular Meetings and Change in the Schedule of Regular Meetings, subsection 3. If there's a change in the schedule of regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted within three days after the meeting at which the change is made, a public notice stating the new date, time, and place of the regular meetings.
That's all it says?
Yes, there's other stuff for rescheduled meetings, public notice on the website, and then at the location of the public body. So if you've got three days, it seems to comply with that section.
Okay. And you can get it in? Okay, can you share that with our Mr. Clerk here?
There's no mention in the public, in the Open Meetings Act about a notice in the, the, I just want to make sure.
Because she can get the notice in tomorrow at 9:00 AM, she said, her editor said to call, to call.
Madam Chair, can't the clerk check on this in terms of legalese with the state? And if we can, we'll move forward with publishing it in the paper. If we can't, then he'll get ahold of you, and we'll go to Plan B.
Okay.
And what's Plan B?
Huh?
What's Plan B?
Well, we'll have to figure out something, obviously. I mean, if we, if we can't.
We can put it in the paper.
If we can't meet, if we can't meet because of the fact that we cannot publish it, then we can't meet.
Yeah.
We'll publish it on the website.
15.264 sub B says, "A public notice for a public body shall always be posted at its principal office and any other locations considered appropriate by the public body. Cable television may also be utilized."
There we go.
Okay. You'll have that up tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Perfect, then we can, we can set up the date for.
Tuesday at 6:00 PM.
Do you want to announce it?
Okay.
Well, you actually.
What's the date again? Oh, it's July.
It's July 30.
Okay, our next regular scheduled city council meeting will be Tuesday, July 30th, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
Council Chair, you should actually adopt a motion to that effect, if that's what you have.
Council Chair?
Okay.
I moved that. If I could read a potential resolution for council, whereas council wishes to amend its regular meeting schedule to add a third regular meeting to the month of July 2019, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to section 6.4 of the charter, council will amend its regular meeting schedule to hold an additional regular meeting on Tuesday, July 30th, 2019, at 6 o'clock? Is that correct?
Yes.
And be it finally resolved that notice shall be provided with no less than three days' notice.
I make that motion as what he said.
Move to adopt.
Councilman Muscat? And Councilman Bazey seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Our next meeting is Tuesday, July 30th, at 6:00 PM. This will be a regular city council meeting.
Council Chair, I move to adjourn this meeting.
We have to open the public comment.
Sorry.
I'm sure, do we have anything from the table? No public announcement? All right, public comment. Your name, and limit it to three minutes.
30 seconds.
30 seconds. Good evening, Zohair Abkhaz, 354, Rosemary for you, Bill.
Thank you.
I really would love to see this body voting seven on this issue. And I would like to see Mr. Miyaki be involved 100%, and he's on board, because when he's on board and everything is really voted seven and approved with the whole council and the legal department, I don't think the mayor will have any choice but to sign it. So I hope we work toward that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay.
Move to close. Move to adjourn.
Muscat moves to adjourn. Bazey seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned.